All right, good evening. Call the council meeting, special council meeting of June 27th to order. Roll call show that Clint Relia is absent. Item two, agenda review. We have a additional order, order 16118. If I could get a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Has to pass unanimously. Moving on to new business, order 1698, order approving the fiscal year 2016-2017 municipal budget as summarized in the general fund summary and projected tax rate proposed for adoption June 27, 2016 sheet. Could I get a motion, please?
Second.
All right. Any discussion about this order? Are you gonna vote on order 1698? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 1699, order approving the capital budget for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $2,504,634 as presented in the summary sheet dated June 27, 2016. Take a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Um, we need to...
Did I read the number wrong?
No, I need you to revise that number to reflect the $25,000 that we just took off.
I apologize.
No, that's my fault. Completely my fault. So that number should be 2,479,634.
Okay.
And that is to reflect the $25,000 reduction of appropriation into capital equipment reserve.
Okay. So could I get a friendly amendment to change the number to 2,479,634 for the capital budget?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment?
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, and then all those in favor of order 1699? Passes unanimously. Order 16100, order approving the tax increment finance district budget for FY 2016-2017 and further authorizing the town manager to increase the TIF expense budget to reflect credit enhancement agreement adjustments as previously approved by council, which are determined by the commitment of FY 17 property taxes. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion about the TIF budget?
Well, I need an amendment on this budget.
Didn't read the number.
What?
I didn't read the number.
Oh, never mind.
But, um, yeah. All right, all those in favor of order 16100? Do we have a new number for 16100?
Special revenue, $1,053,281, and this reflects using MBNA reserve money as match for the fiber grant.
Okay. So order 16101, order approving the special revenue fund budget for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $1,053,281. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Take a vote on order 16101. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Okay, order 16102, order approving the payment of the Penobscot County tax assessment in the amount of $539,394. Take a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Take a vote on order 16102. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 16103, order approving the payment of the RSU 26 tax assessment in the amount I'll take a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. And this was the number that was ratified at the June 14 vote?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor of order 16103? Passes unanimously. Order 16104, order approving a sewer rate increase for FY 2017 of six cents per 100 cubic feet per quarter with a minimum meter charge per quarter of $55.20, 72 cent increase per quarter or...
Per quarter.
Effective January 1, 2017. Take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of order 16104? Passes unanimously. Order 16105, order approving the water pollution control facility budget for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $1,470,960 for operations and $225,000 for capital improvements for a total of $1,695,960. Take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Take a vote on order 16105. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 16106, order approving the five-year capital forecast 2017 to 2021, final plan dated June 13, 2016. Take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on order 16106. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 16107, I guess I would also ask for a...
I move that we waive the reading of the boundaries of the district.
Appreciate that, all right. Order 16107, order adopting the Orano Village Center District Development Program and establishing the boundaries of the district as in the order, but don't have to read it. I'll take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, the boundaries have not changed.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Order 16108, order establishing the amount of the implementation assessments of the Village Center Tax District for the July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017 fiscal year at zero per $1,000 evaluation on all real and personal property located within the district as of April 1, 2016, and committing said assessments to the tax collector of the town of Orano for collection in accordance with the authority established under 30A MRSA Section 5255, Subparagraph 5. Take a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Easy job for the tax collector on that one.
Yep. So there will be no tack, Village Center tax upon vote. All those in favor of 16108? Passes unanimously. Order 16109, order approving the 2016-2017 fee schedule to be effective July 1, 2016. Take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of order 16109? Passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I hesitate to do this, but I think we should do it right. Before we leave the budget section, can we go back to order 16105?
You want me to read a number in there?
106, yeah. I, this, um, the capital should be 337,000.
The five-year forecast?
No, I'm sorry, it's order 16104. Um, sorry, 105. It is the order approving the WPCF budget.
Oh, okay. So it should be two...
It should be 337,000.
Okay, so I guess I need to...
And how do we fix this?
...to amend.
I think you would reopen. Can you re... You are a parliamentary person.
Do you want me to take a motion to amend, or you want me...
To reopen, I probably would make some...
Probably, because if we change one, don't you have to change the total also?
Yeah, I can, that's easy for me to do right here.
Okay. All right, I will take a motion to reopen order 16105 for the purpose of updating the numbers.
So moved.
And seconded.
All right, so I will take a vote to approve the opening of order 16105. All right, and then I will...
It would be amended to have the same operating budget, but a capital budget of $337,000. This was what was presented at public hearing, for a total of $1,807,960.
So I will take a motion to amend order 16105, approving the water pollution control facility budget for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $1,470,960 for operations and $337,000 for capital improvements for a total of $1,807,960.
So moved.
Second.
Right. Everybody clear on that?
Yep.
Any discussion? Right. All those in favor of the amended order? Passes unanimously. Okay, so...
Okay.
110? You were on 110.
16110.
Okay. All right. Order 16110, order approving a contract zone request by Erin Stupowits... Sabakowitz, sorry about that. Doing business with Ty Kitchen to change the zoning of 12 and 14 Park Street, tax map 19-4, lots 99 and 100 from MDR to, and HDR to C2 to allow for a takeout restaurant. Take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, do we need any more discussion on this? All right, hearing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor of order 16110? Passes unanimously. Thank you for all your work on that. Order 16111, order awarding a bid to Sunset Development, Inc. of Greenfield for the Charles Street and Stillwater Interceptor Sewer Remediation Projects in an amount not to exceed $229,700 to be drawn from the Sewer Infrastructure Reserve account and further authorizing the town manager to execute the contract. Take a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Joe Madigan, Superintendent of the Treatment Plan. This, uh, this project, we bid this out, we sent select bids, we used a select bidder process, we sent out invitations to bid to seven different contractors. We ended up with two, Sergeant Corporation and Sunset Development. The bids came in pretty close, so we thought it was a pretty good bid. They're underneath, they're quite ways under what the engineers' estimate was, so we think we're in pretty good shape for this project. We've worked with Sunset Development before, they've done good work for us, so I'd like to see you accept this.
Any comments from council?
Any questions?
Questions, comments? Further discussion? No? No? All right, thanks, Joe. Um, all right, I will take a vote on order 16111. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. I will take a motion to move the consent agenda, which sets some public hearings for land use, accessory dwellings, and for July 11. So I'll take a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion or comments?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda?
I just have one quick question. Is there other... What is a noticing that will be attached to that public hearing besides this, which is in the consent agenda that we're going to have that public hearing, but what other kind of noticing will be out there?
Um, every public hearing that the council has actually goes in the newspaper. Nancy does that, and the newspapers also, the reporters get copies of them in hopes that they'll pick them up, posted on our website, posted in six places around town, and people who subscribe to the email serve, service, get notice of them as well.
All right, I'll take a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Moving to the order we added for the agenda, order 16118, an order approving an amendment to the FY 16 budget transferring $51,678 total, $38,214 wages, $7,140 health insurance, $3,401 MSRS, and $2,923 FICA from the code enforcement and planning budget to the town manager's budget to reflect the management and approval of IT GIS personnel and funds. Could I get a motion, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Sophie, you want to...
Sure, you discussed this in committee last week, but when we approved the budget last year for code and planning and the town manager's office, we knew we were going to hire an IT GIS administrator. We, our original vision had had that person working in code and planning with the advent of some space constraints and also understanding that our IT needs were more universal than just code and planning. We ended up hiring that person and placing them in the town manager's office. So this simply reflects the budget adjustment. So this is what you budgeted in code and planning for that position is simply being moved to the budget for town manager so that when we get done at the end of the year, you don't see an under, major under expenditure in code and planning and an overdraft in the town manager's budget. But it adds no additional dollars to the FY 16 budget.
Great.
Any discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on order 16118. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. We move on to public comments. Have any?
I hate to do this to you.
No, you don't. I know it's been a long day for you people, but that's what you get the big bucks for. I got five items, I did want answers to them, but since you've been here a long time, I assume that the answers will dribble in to me over the next year or so. First item is, I've noticed that most of your committee meetings, all your council members are present, and this is where they ask all the questions. After the committee meetings, whatever was discussed is voted at the council meetings without comment from council members. My question or comment is, why aren't committee meetings televised that appear where all the action is? So, you've had your committee meeting tonight, and you've discussed something for an hour and a half or whatever. I assume there's a lot of questions and so forth, and then you come in here and you, the audit is made and everybody puts their hands up, and I don't know if anybody, any of these committee meetings, any of the council people have objections to some of this, but you always vote seven to zero or whatever it is. I think your committee meeting should be televised, so that's number one. I don't need an answer. Number two is, I'm not sure if this is a, is one of our ordinances, but I've heard at one of the council meetings about rental units allowing house guests. It seems, it's very difficult to enforce the three or less unrelated members to a rental unit, and I'm willing to bet a week's pay, which isn't very much, that no landlord will be questioned on this, and if so, the answer will be the fourth person is a house guest. So I don't know if that was something I heard at one of these meetings or I dreamed about, but apparently there's something going on regarding house guests, and I think there's a problem there.
We're defining what a house guest is, and we're putting limitations on the length of time a quote "house guest" can stay to address exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I realize that, but how are you going to determine a house guest when we can't determine if there's three, four, five, six people living in a rental unit? That's my question, that's my problem. My number four...
Stuart, do you want, do you want an answer to that? Sophie will give you an answer.
Well, I don't know, I, yeah, if you want to.
I think where you heard that, Stuart, was at a...
Your mic isn't on or something.
Here we go.
Oh.
Now you got me? Okay. I think, I have lost track of where we are in the process. We're either just coming back from public hearing or just going to public hearing with that item, and the issue is right now when code goes to a property, because we've had complaints that there are too many people living there, they simply can say, well, they're a house guest. What this ordinance does is puts the onus on the landlord to prove to the town who is in fact on the lease and who is, who are tenants. So if people are on the lease and there are more than the three unrelateds or five in some situations that are allowed, the landlord would get in trouble, or the, now we have documentation that that person is a house guest and they can only stay for a certain amount of time, and where that comes in are in egregious situations where you have houses packed with people that are there day in and day out and causing major disruption. I don't think the intent is to say that we can get everybody, but in those egregious situations, by defining what a house guest is and limiting them, it allows code to address those situations.
One thing you just mentioned, though, that I didn't know about, there is possibility on some rental units, they can have five unrelated.
So when that ordinance was passed, evidently there were, it was before my time, Stuart, but there were properties that had five people in them and they were grandfathered. If they don't follow code, they can lose their grandfather's status if they are declared a disorderly property, but, and if they don't rent five, then they lose, they, the goal is to get them down to three.
Thank you. I understand there was a discussion somewhere about changing the voting place for the citizens of Orano to the University Field House. Any truth in that?
There is some truth in that, and that will be a public hearing on July 11 to discuss it.
What brought that up?
Um, well, Sophie can handle it, but basically it, we couldn't, we couldn't fit everyone at this, in the high school or the middle school. I don't know if you want to go into detail.
So when, after the Grove came on board and we could no longer accommodate people at the Burt Street School for voting, we consolidated off-campus voting into one location at the middle school. What we have discovered is that we, well, we've had lots of complaints about traffic, parking, and people having interaction with students during the voting. And so we went off on a search at the staff level to try to find a location that was big enough for everybody to vote at that wouldn't have those issues, and so the one that we have come back with is the Field House on campus that would actually consolidate all, both voting locations, the one that is currently at the Memorial Union and the, and the Orano Middle School, consolidate them on campus at the Field House for state and federal elections with local elections still being held out of the town office.
And this would be for one voting place for all of Orano?
All of Orano.
Are they charging?
Um, the agreement...
Will they?
Well, the agreement that we have thus far is if we cause them to incur overtime, then they're gonna, they're reserving the right to bill through that overtime. In talking with folks up on campus, I think that it's either a remote possibility or if it does come through, it will be a very minimal charge to the town.
I'm not driving to the university to vote. Sorry, absentee. Let me see. Oh, okay, my fourth item here, I shouldn't ask, but is there someplace I can check to find out what the final vote on the school budget was?
It was never published anywhere.
What's that?
I'm saying, I don't, I'm not aware that it was ever published anywhere, but...
So it's published downstairs, on the wall, on the bulletin board downstairs, the voting results are there, and I am not sure if it was posted to the website because we're in transition on the website, but normally, Stuart, the website would have the voting results on it.
If I go downstairs tomorrow, I can see it on...
It was there when I came in this morning.
Oh, well, thank you. Now, I, this is my, next to the last one anyway, because I thought of the sixth one. I have a question regarding the 2017 municipal budget. The increase was over last year's by $381,000. According to what I read in the Penobscot Times, the largest driver of the increase related to the growing response demand to public safety that required additional staff. And my question is, what was the growing response demands and what was the additional staff?
Okay. So it was in public safety, and the first demand had to do with our emergency medical service requirements regarding reporting and the number of people that respond to EMS calls. This is determined by the state of Maine in terms of their policies that they expect us to follow. So what we have discovered is in order to meet those demands, we really need to keep five people on every shift, and we were allowing people to drop down to four and not filling the overtime, and so there was a little over $60,000 put into the fire department budget to cover that overtime, so we will keep the department staffed all the time at five people on a shift. The police department has a schedule that they dropped people out of for a very long time, so if somebody was on vacation, they just wouldn't fill it, and what we have discovered with the types of calls that we're getting that are requiring two or more people to respond, that in the chief's opinion, it is no longer safe to have the town with just one police officer for a significant amount of time, and so we have gone ahead and filled an additional police slot in the PD that will allow them to actually fill the schedule. We showed council that there were about 56 hours in a week that we currently weren't filling on a regular basis, and that adding 40 hours will drop the overtime cost with that if we were to fill, so the choice was to either begin to fill it with overtime or hire somebody, and hiring somebody was cheaper.
My last item that I just happened to think of... Uh, my last item that I just happened to think of, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the town awarded the Boston Post Kane to Pauline Butler, and I didn't see anything in Penobscot Times or the Bangor Daily again. So I don't know if it's their problem that it, it seems like they don't necessarily care to publish Orano stuff unless it deals with riots and so forth. Uh, but, uh, anyway, it's, uh, it concerned me that, uh, the, the other item that did come up, and I think someone just mentioned it, uh, at the committee meeting somewhere, uh, Orano never gets in the paper, Penobscot Times, council meetings, committee meetings or anything. Milford does, Bradley does, I guess Old Town does, but Orano, so who knows if you ever have in a meeting? So, sorry to keep you on while I go.
That's all right.
You guys are supposed to dress up the night off.
No.
Actually, we're going back to something else. That's okay. All right. Uh, does anyone else have any comments? Nope. We'll move on to adjournment. We'll take him, whoa.
Do you want to just let people know that we're going to continue our, the balance of our committee agenda, um, after, at the conclusion of this meeting?
We're going to continue the balance of our committee agenda at the balance of the, the end of this meeting. So motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
We're going back to the table?
Back then.
Back to the table.
Do you want to take a quick break for the bathroom?
Sure.
What do they call those, the school?
Huh?
Recession?
Oh.
Oh.
Oh.